Okay. Emily, are you ready? Okay. Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall, and I hope you all voted. And I'm going to call the meeting of Milton Common Council for number six, 2018, to order. So the first meeting, first item of the agenda, you're all called.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Teal.
West.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Sorry. Here.
Thank you. So the next item is the comments from the city's president. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak. Okay, so there are no takers, and I close that part of the meeting. And next one is the approval or the consent agenda.
Move approval.
I'll move approval, but I would recommend or ask that we remove item two from the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, so you need a second.
You don't need a second to remove anything from the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with item number two removed, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, any motion passes. If you want to make a...
My comment, I guess, on item two is, at least in my packet, what was provided was not council meeting minutes, but an agenda. And I know I could have gone out and done some more work and found the right document, but it wasn't what was posted.
Right.
So I would ask that we, I don't know.
Defer until the next meeting.
Confer until the next meeting.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving item number two, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. We are on to the resolutions.
Oh, never mind, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's fine.
So these are...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Six items.
Yep.
And that's under the consent agenda. Okay, we are on to resolution. Item number one is resolution 201847, granting release of ten-foot R-Y-R-D-E stormwater drainage is meant for Heffron Homes at Peshaway Bay. The black line lines 140 and 141.
If you'd like an explanation, Larry Beckler worked on this on behalf of the planning staff.
Yeah, it just, there were two lots, and they just shifted the lines a little bit.
Right, there will be another easement there once this project is done, but it requires the release of the existing easement.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Okay.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all these, all those in favor of the motion granting release of the stormwater drainage is meant, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one is item number two, 2018-54, declaring property owned by the city within lot to CSM number 11737 to be surplus property and approving sale thereof.
Just noting that it's actually CSM 11735.
Yeah, that's right.
Also, if I could mention too, we did make a couple of changes that are included in the document that I passed out, as well as a document that you have included in the packet. I pointed this out to Robert, so he wouldn't have to bring it up, but I thought you'd all like to know. One was the closing date in the agreement. We had 2018, July 1st of 2018. That's been changed to July 1st of 2019. We also had a technical change in paragraph 10 to refer to itself as paragraph 10 rather than 7.5. And then, in the resolution, which is directly before you, the addition of the deed as exhibit B in that resolution. That's something that Larry pointed out earlier today, and Matt Fleming drafted that deed immediately. So all of that now is before you. Those two technical changes are not, but they're in the document that would be executed by the mayor.
So we are approving this document provided today, so.
The purchase agreement is actually agreement's item one, but Mike just described the changes.
So that's not directly before you on this, but it will be pretty soon.
For what it's worth, I was totally going to reject that if you hadn't made those changes, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented with all the modifications for declaring property owned by the city within lot to CSM number 11735, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next item is 2018-55, authorizing the direct charge of public fire protection.
Move approval. One second.
Okay, any questions? I think I will start. This is a tax shifting, this is a hidden tax, and I have to really know what do the average tax would be, about $50 per home here. And I'd like to know what the taxpayers are going to be getting for paying $50 per year forever. And as far as I can see, it will be hardship on the apartment dwellers. And it will be, there are more than 50% of the people living in the apartments, and it will be also hardship for more low-income folks here. So that's how I look at it, so. Any other questions or comments? Oh, go ahead, Emily.
I'd like to say that when I was knocking doors this spring, I had, I met a lot of renters who couldn't afford where they were living. And they were stretching to make rent here in Middleton. And they said that they were often hit with utility bills that were very high, especially in winter, because they just didn't know that their windows were bad and things like that. So I'm very sensitive to this, and I say that because I met a lot of people who are renting, and the parents are working two to three jobs. And I was like, oh, so like, one stays home? And they said, no, one parent works either a full-time job, and the other works two or three, or they both work two jobs. And I was surprised. So every penny matters these days.
I agree. Thank you, Emily. Yes, go ahead.
So I will just start as, I, I'm not going to recite what happened in the last couple budget meetings, because I think you guys have understood my position on this. This is a backdoor tax increase, shift from the general fund to the water utility to enable a larger tax increase on the general fund. Pure and simple, that's all it is, right? It goes against years of precedent that the city has in being transparent in what it does for its services, right? We are at a point where we really need to be transparent, and we need to hold ourselves accountable for spending. And all this does is kick that decision matrix down the road, right? This is essentially a 50% increase over what the state allows us to increase our levy by. By shifting this, these fees to the water utility, right? This enables about $170,000 to $190,000 effective for next year, on top of what the state allowable levy limit increase is. So think about that. It's basically, it's another 50% increase on the taxes. So we need to be very cognizant of the burden that we're placing on our constituents. To me, what we're intending to use these funds for fulfills wants, not needs. It's going to come down to, you know, the council is going to have to ask its constituents to go to a referendum to increase spending, and it's going to have to rationalize that at some point in the future. But I think we all are doing our constituents a disservice by playing these budget games to get us incrementally to the point where we're going to have to ask for more and more money. We need to be better stewards of our constituents' tax dollars. And a lot of that has to do with saying, making the hard decisions, right? Right here, right now. Shouldn't be doing these things, right? We are like, we need to be the parents when the kids go to the candy store and say, no, right? It would be nice to have this, but we really can't afford it. So just think about the burdens that this, these additional burdens that this will do to all the constituents, not just the apartment dwellers, but the single-family houses, right? We just need to be more aware of what we're doing to our constituents.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, I think you're forgetting one thing that has put us in this position. That was back when Scott Walker was elected governor and passed Act 20, which took out the allowance for increasing the levy for inflation. And we have been dealing with that since that time, using the amount that we get for new construction to cover the cost of inflation. So if we don't do this, we're going to be having to cut services. That's, which includes probably the new police officer. And we have grown a tremendous amount in population. We're not, I object to Mark saying we're being irresponsible to doing this. This has been forced on us by state government, and we have dealt with it, I think, very admirably, in terms of not increasing property taxes and doing as many different things as we can. We unfortunately did not, or I guess we're lucky, we had previous councils many years ago who didn't put these things in place, like every other municipality around here. They have already transferred this. They have stormwater utility fees that are three to four times higher than what we're paying. Pay for garbage collection in these other cities. So I think we have been responsible. And this is, yes, it will affect everybody here, but we need some more money for operating, not for capital projects. We can deal with that very easily. It's getting our operating, which is keeping quality staff, providing quality police and EMS. And we have just seen with two horrendous events, the benefits of having both of those entities. We did not lose any lives. We could have very easily. And our, we have a very lean staff. I've gone through it different times. I know several years ago, when we were arguing a lot about elections, and looked at the amount of staff that clerk's offices have in all the other municipalities. We have, and we had an argument over getting a deputy clerk. We have a very, very lean staff. I'm not sure we can keep giving, providing the services we are if we don't do that, even as, it's not an ideal thing.
Emily, you are next.
My thought is, is if we're doing this because of the state cap, which I understand the finances and the struggle, there is an election tonight. If, if the governor was to not be reelected, would that change the cap potentially? Because if it would...
Well, I know others is interested.
It's statutory.
Right, it's statutory.
It would have to be changed by the legislature.
All right, thank you.
Mike?
To address your comments, Mr. Mayor, on a regular basis, practically every day, you ask the staff to do things that we don't have budget for. We tell you that, and you never take that as an answer that's truthful. You keep pushing us hard to go beyond our budget. Well, this is why we need these funds. We need these funds for maintenance of public works, public lands, police officer, and promotion to a sergeant. And we're not going to have those funds that you ask us for every single day to do more. So if you're opposed to this, remember that when you push the staff.
I don't ask anything...
Yes, you do.
Out of extraordinary, but...
Yes, you do.
We will keep talking.
Ask any of the staff here, and they'll tell you. We feel that pressure every day. When we've got a flood emergency, and we have regular things to continue doing, and you ask us to go beyond the scope of our budget, we just don't have those resources without your support of something like this.
Okay.
If you're opposed to it, that's fine. We're going to hold you accountable for that.
Yeah, well, let's have a discussion. I don't have any problem with that.
I am having that discussion with you right now.
Yeah, well, we can have one-on-one, too. I mean, that's not a problem, so.
Of course we can, but this happens every day.
Any other comments or questions?
We all know where I'm going to come down on this. I have changed my idea since we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. This is poor policy. If we're in a bind, and obviously we are, we cannot spend money we don't have, then we need to take a good, hard look at what we... Now, everybody's going to go, oh, there's no such thing. Well, that's why we all sit around the table. I know exactly what you're going to say, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Then put it on the table. Tell us what you're going to cut.
Yeah.
Because I, you know, I'm not going to put up with, okay, in abstract, we're going to be in favor of this or not in favor of this, when you don't have anything on concrete to have us say that that's wasteful. Because I don't see anything in the budget that's wasteful. I want more police officers, and I had to compromise and get one quarter of a year's worth of a police officer next year. That's not enough, and that's needed in our community. So tell me where you're going to cut if we don't do this tonight. That's what I want to see. I don't want to see platitudes tonight. I want to see real things, concrete, on the table right now.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's have a roll call board.
Kuhn?
No.
Burke?
No.
Teal? West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Thord?
Yes.
So the...
Four-four.
Four-four.
Okay, so I'm...
We have to vote.
Yeah, so no.
The motion fails.
Okay, so the next item is...
Did the motion fail?
The motion failed, yeah.
Oh, I misheard.
It was four-four, and the mayor voted no.
So item number four, 2018-56, accepting and ratifying emergency access easement and temporary construction easement over Evergreen Hill Cemetery Association lands.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion accepting the emergency access easement, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Agreements, real estate purchase agreement with West Spring Pines condominiums.
Rule for rules recommended. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the real estate purchase agreement with West Spring Pines condominiums, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The next one is stormwater management system maintenance agreement with KTJ, Care of Feed Investment LLC, 8206 Cynthia Street. I like the city, you need to explain it, we do need a motion. Well, Sean, do you want to explain what this is?
I don't know if it's KTJ or Hope Indian Investments LLC, but by the title, a stormwater management maintenance agreement, is just an acknowledgement, recorded document, that the owner of a property is going to maintain the property that required stormwater...
Okay.
Pretty choicely explained, generally.
Okay, need a motion to approve, then?
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number three, agreement related to certificate of authorization for Middleton Fire District to operate an unmanned aircraft system as a public aircraft under 49 U.S.A.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I am very supportive of this, but with this separating it out from the fire district and making it part of the city, my question is, does this restrict the use of this unmanned device to only the city of Middleton, or does the fire district need to seek the same agreements in other, other areas that the fire district covers? I was kind of uncertain of that.
We wouldn't have done this, except for the fact that the FAA insisted that we do it this way. The idea here is not to disturb any of the existing relationships built over the course of the last 75 years with the other members of the Middleton Fire District, but rather to carve this out for special treatment to comply with the wishes of the FAA.
There, is that saying that the only place where this drone can be operated is within the city limits of the city of Middleton?
No, I don't think so at all.
That's where I was, sorry.
The fire district, the fire district covers more than the city, so I would assume it would be operated anywhere within the fire district.
Or I would assume that if the fire department is called out in a supportive role, it could also be used.
Absolutely.
This is, this is simply a requirement of the FAA. They simply said, if you want to do this, this is the only way you're going to get it done.
Right.
There's no, there's no option B. And I can tell you right now that the fire department right now responds many times a week to requests for support roles for other fire departments. Sometimes they say, bring drones with you, because we need to look at stuff. So it's not unusual at all to get that kind of request.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the agreement related to certificate of authorization for Milton Fire District is approved. Item number four, agreement with MSA Professional Services for design of Peasant Branch Creek tow protection downstream of Park Street.
Move approval is recommended by finance, which switches the funding source to contingent.
Second.
Any...
And I would like to say, this...
Yes, Susan.
In Mike's comments, it's mixing two different distinct projects, so it's confusing, very confusing.
I think he, he just provided the information, so...
No, he provided information on two very distinct projects, not this one single. This one single project is the second paragraph.
Yeah, that's true.
The first and third paragraphs are the bigger design of the whole Peasant Branch reconstruction from city limits to the lake. They're two different projects.
Right, are you talking about the agenda comments?
Yes.
These are done now in tandem with all of the departments that provide those, so I didn't specifically provide those public works, I think Gary Huth did. And I think he was just trying to give you an overall picture of what we're trying to accomplish now with both the agreement with Cardinal and this. We have two separate things moving in the same direction, so just want to make sure the council is fully aware that we're doing that study of the entire creek corridor, and then we're also focusing with this, as you said...
That's what I'm saying.
Specifically on the toe of the slope at Park Street.
But if you read this, you get very confused as to what we're actually doing on.
You could easily get confused by that. It's not intended to be confusing, it's intending to be broadening the understanding.
But it's very confusing even for us and citizens.
He's an engineer, it's his, it's his wherewithal to confuse people.
I have to comment. I was here through the finance committee as well, and there seems to be a few comments about engineers that I think we're going to have a...
Are accurate is...
So you want Sean to go first?
I'm going, I...
Robert first, and then Sean.
I'll have, I'll withhold my comments while Sean speaks.
I only wanted to clarify that, yes, Gary wrote the comments about the holistic nature of needs in the creek conservancy corridor there. I, I think what Swab had talked about was that they wanted MSA to proceed with this project design only far enough to see if Cardinal, in looking at the overall corridor, would make some referral by that time to tweak the final design of this. So a little bit, they are married, just in time, but not in funding.
Yeah, that's...
If that makes sense.
Yes.
But I think that's why he included that other reference was because they were authorized only to go so far, and then paused to see if other information is available, so.
Yes, Robert.
I do have another comment. And I understand that we're talking about breaking this up and saying, paying for the engineering portion under contingency, and I have no problem with that in this time. I understood what happened in, in finance, and I'm okay with it one time, but I guess I would like to just state for the record that when a project happens, I think of engineering as a part of that project. And we can have this discussion in the future about how we pay for these things, and whether we break out engineering and pay for engineering from one source, from one pot of money, and the actual labor to, to make changes in our environment from a second pot of money. We can have that discussion, I'm, I welcome it. But I just want to state for the record that it is my opinion that engineering is an integral part of the project, and therefore, being integral, one source of funding is not a bad idea either, so that's my comment.
Good comment, Robert. Yes, more comments?
My apologies to engineers.
No, they make things happen.
It's on videotape, so...
Okay, if there are no more comments, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Public service agreement with liturgical publication for senior center newsletter.
Move approval.
Second.
Wow, two at the same time, so. Okay, any questions or comments? Larry, you have anything to say, or Tammy, you and... to say? Or Tammy, you have any?
Actually, I had a question.
Yes.
Is this incremental revenue already embedded in our 19 plans, or is this, did we stop and say we needed to verify what this would be? I can't remember whether we included it as...
My, my understanding of it is that the current newsletter is done with no costs to the Senior Center. This would include printing costs, but the intent is to have the advertising cover those printing costs. So it would be a budget neutral. And if Tammy has anything to add, or if I've misstated anything.
Tammy, go ahead and come to this.
This is actually a budget savings to the Senior Center. The cost of the newsletter now is about $6,300 a year, and that does come out of our budget. So we would save that cost in the printing cost because Liturgical picks up the printing costs with the advertising. So it is a budget savings to us of $6,300.
And I'm just trying to remember whether we, we included that in our preliminary plans, or whether this was something that we were holding off until we got the answer to.
If that's the case, that was not factored into the Senior Center budget for the $6,300.
Correct.
So basically, it's $6,300 bottom line.
Tammy, aren't there new revenues as a result of this, too?
Yes, if, if we take in enough advertising, we do get a percentage back, sent back to us at the end of the year from Liturgical. So, so we make money on, or we bring in revenue on it.
Connect and make sure that we've accounted for whatever increment of the plan this will cause.
Isn't that figure estimated at $14,000?
$14,000 was what it has to be. This costs us nothing. It saves us $6,300, if that was your question.
I understand that. I'm trying to get back to the, to the 19 plan. I'd just like to make sure we've got it covered, that whatever the impact of this is gonna be, it's captured in the plan.
So what Mark's saying is he's gonna take $6,300 from your budget-
Oh, no.
For other things that are gonna happen in the budget. So...
Okay.
Am I not right?
No.
Wait, is she right or not?
He said no.
I said no, that I was not planning on taking $6,300 from the Senior Center budget.
I'm just confused because it was a double negative, I think. Were you saying she is right, or she's not right?
Keep the savings up. I just wanna get that on the, on the discussion.
I have no designs on whatever funds are in this transaction.
Tammy, you're pretty safe, so...
Or their budget, or how it impacts their budget.
Robert, he may have a question here.
This is something I brought up two weeks ago, and it's, it's more for the city attorney. I've already, I think I've already stated, I really don't like evergreen clauses. Is there any chance, I know that, I think the statement that was in the notes was something along the lines of LPI would still like a six-month notice from the city for discontinuing the agreement. I don't have a problem with the six-month notice. 180 days is technically what it states in the agreement. What I don't love is that the parties agree to then renew this agreement for such a period and under such terms as are identical to those contained in this agreement, which is basically, we start off with three years, and if we either forget to, to say we don't wanna renew it, or, or whatever, it goes for another three years, as I read this. And I guess what I would ask for, if this is at all acceptable to the, the people at LPI, would be to change it to something along the lines of, after the 180 days prior to the expiration of this agreement term, the parties agree to then renew this agreement thereafter for a period of one year. So basically, when it auto-renews at the end of its initial term, any subsequent renewal is for a year-to-year renewal, and under such other terms as are identical to those contained in this agreement. So basically, just say, I'd like this thing, if, if we're gonna have the auto-renewal at the end of the initial three-year period, I'd like it to auto-renew for one year at a time, if that's something that we can get.
Well, my view on this is that when you have long-term relationships with suppliers, having automatic renewal unless the city objects on a specified time limit is totally customary. And I would say that if we fail to object, that's on us. It's not on LPI. And I would assume that our staff would be diligent and watch those dates. And if we aren't happy, they'll probably object long before six months if there's a problem. So I, this, this kind of clause, I understand your concern, but I also think that we are, we are strong enough that we'll, we'll be able to object when the time comes. If we need to.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll just throw it out to the, the board, then, and, you know, just be aware that this, this, it's a three-year term, and when it renews, it automatically renews for another three years. And I'm, the contracts that I deal with in my day job, quite often when there is an auto-renewal clause, you, it basically goes, it's kinda like having a, a lease, and after the end of your lease, it goes to a month-to-month lease. It's, it's a little easier. You, you have a chance to, you know, once you've fulfilled your initial three years, you get a chance to kind of look at it again every year, not, not get stuck with another three years. If that's not a concern to anybody else, that's fine.
So could it be yearly? What is the problem with that?
Well, I would assume that a three-year agreement has risks and benefits to both parties. From the city's perspective, having a three-year contract means we will not have to pay for a newsletter for at least three years. And I would assume the, that's our benefit. The risk is that LPI decides they don't like doing this work anymore, if, when it's only a one-year contract that gives us less time to look for another firm to do the work. I, I get this with, with a lease, but again, a typical lease, and this even happens in commercial leases. I remember years ago, Walgreens, of all people, missed their renewal, and they, they got a new lease proposal with substantially more rent. That was their bad.
Sure.
That's the same issue here. I, you know, I, I just don't think, I, I assume we bargained for and wanted a three-year term, and would like to see the same term going forward, unless these people don't perform.
And I, I apologize, because I, I would like to get your input, Tammy, because I don't wanna...
I can only tell you, I've worked with LPI 12 years prior to coming here. And absolutely, we are absolutely on top of the advertising, the businesses. It would be something that I would watch very carefully. It was a really excellent relationship that I had with them for 12 years down in Monroe. And the company, I think it's important to say, has been in business for 45 years. They're continuing to grow and expand, especially in the area of senior services. Not only now are they into the printing of newsletters, now they're even exploring software for senior centers. So I think it's a company that is very solid. And the really great thing about this is, it allows us to market our senior center in a way that we haven't been able to do before. And that, in turn, helps us grow relationships with local business as well. So there's lots of benefits to this. And I do understand your concern on the, on the three-year contract, but that is very common in a lot of contracts that we do deal with, and certainly something I will be very diligent about.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tammy. So, Robert, you're okay with that?
So, Robert, if we don't, if we don't like it after three years, and we wanna-
Cancel it.
We just-
Absolutely.
And then we turn, or we say, after three years, you know, this is okay, but we wanna, we're gonna switch. We want a year instead of, we just terminate-
Absolutely.
-the agreement. But this is, I totally agree with Larry, with Larry's saying. Obviously, he's an expert. I have to agree. But this is very, very standard.
Sure.
Very, very standard stuff.
I'm, I had my say, and I've heard other people's input, and that's what I wanted tonight. So thank you.
And I'm sure that, that staff will put it in their tickler file, if you will, so that 180 days before, they'll-
I don't know. Some of them aren't engineers, so...
Touche. Technically, by the way, it is two and a half years, so we would have to provide notice two and a half years after the start of the contract.
And I'm on the senior, the aging committee, so I'll stay on top of it for you.
It's all on Emily.
It's on me.
I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you.
Okay, Joanna, you have something to say?
Thanks, Emily.
Any other comments? Then all those in favor of the motion for the public services agreement with the Liturgical Publications, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. Agreement with January 1 LLC Rochelle, Listen, Seth Taylor, for assistance with the City of Milton Public Art Master Plan Relaunch.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Oh, yes, Joanna.
Well, if we're gonna start cutting, I'd rather have a police officer than $1,800 for a new arts master plan. So I'm gonna encourage the four people that didn't vote for the fire protection plan to vote against this, so we can at least start racking up $1,800 for our police officer.
Any other comments? This comes from the art committee by itself.
I agree with Joanna.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion by January 1, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Was that Teal, West, and Richard opposed?
I should just do a roll call.
Okay, go ahead and roll call.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
Teal?
No.
Olson?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burke?
No.
So the motion fails five to-
Four-four.
It's four-four, so-
I'll do you again.
Oh, it's four-four. Okay, I will, yeah, I'm going to vote for yes.
Yes, okay.
To go for this, yes.
Can't wait for your plan. Be great.
Okay, so the next one is item number seven, Agreement with Strand Engineering for Design of Golf Course Parking.
Approval is recommended.
Second.
Any question or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the agreement with Strand Engineering, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We are now to ordinances. This is the second reading. The number one is ordinance to establish 30 miles per hour speed limit on High Road.
Approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the second motion, say aye.
Aye.
Second reading, sorry. So the second is the ordinance to change composition of Public Arts Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanna make a comment. The Arts Committee is currently at nine, but there was some language in the ordinance that was contradictory, so this is why it's moving from seven to nine. The only thing that's really changing is one of the members of the Arts Committee would be, when fundraising or development.
Skills.
Skills, yeah, skills, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes everyone. So create appointments. This is Stormwater Utility Board appointment of Jim Koch from P R C.
I move that we table this because it doesn't need to come before council, since he was already approved by council as a P R C member, and this is a direct appointment from P R C.
Mike, you were not checking toward, did you find out?
I, I talked with Larry and Susan beforehand, and Larry and I agree on, on the, the ordinance allows the committees to appoint members to the Stormwater Utility Board. Doesn't say anything about having to go back through the council to do that.
Okay. So what was your motion?
The table.
Table.
Okay.
We need a table. It's just, it's done.
It's done.
Say.
We don't need to do anything.
Okay, alright. Okay, need a motion to, so somebody will let Jim know that you should attend meetings?
He's already been attended.
Okay, alright. Need a motion to adjourn?
We're not, we're not voting on it at all.
Nope.
And, uh-
There was a motion to table, right?
That's what you should do. You need to dispose of it.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Way to get rid of it, I think.
And who seconded that?
Who seconded it?
You have to, it's on the agenda.
Don't wanna table it, because if anybody can bring it back at any point in time, I think we just need to dispose of the, the item, say, no action is necessary.
No, you needed action. It's on the agenda.
You could say tabled indefinitely.
Yeah, right.
Tabled indefinitely is my move.
But we need a second.
Second.
Okay. So all those who are in favor of tabling it indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second?
I'll second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.